All right, I will call this special meeting of the Franklin Township Board of Trustees to order on June twentieth at twelve P M. We are here to discuss the fire levy and the road department's new building. It says garage, but it's the new building. And we didn't have a last minute resolution that was just handed to us that we will cover. Let's go ahead and cover that resolution. Oh, actually, there's a prayer.
Prayer. John, will you lead us in prayer?
Dear Heavenly Father, we thank you for this day. We thank you for the opportunity that we had to come to you in the calmness of our meetings, and we do the work of the people. We just ask that you be with us this day and be with the ones that are sick that couldn't be here today for it's in your name. Amen.
Jim, you want to lead us in the pledge?
Got it? Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Ma'am, do you want to give us a little call, please?
Jim?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
All right. Ma'am, since that is your department, can you read us the resolution that you need?
Yes, Resolution Twenty Twenty Four dash zero eight six, Amendment Engagement Letter Number Twenty Eight between Jeff Wilczek, C P A Retired, and Franklin Township. It is resolved by the Board of Trustees, Franklin Township, Franklin County, Ohio, that the board approves to accept the Amendment Engagement Letter Number Twenty Eight between Jeff Wilczek, C P A Retired, and Franklin Township for one hundred hours at fifty-five an hour for a total of five thousand five hundred. Section two, that all formal actions of this board concerning and relating the adoption of this resolution were passed in an open meeting of this board and that the deliberations of this board and any of its committees that resulted in such formal action were the meeting is open to the public and compliant with all legal requirements, including section one twenty-one point twenty-two of the Ohio Reserve Code. Section two of this resolution shall be declared as emergency and in full force and effective immediately upon its adoption.
So moved as the resolution is written, what is the amendment to it? Could you please read that for the record?
Yes.
Was it the hours?
I think it's the highlighted right here.
Okay. The amendment is to reconcile the bank with U A N for May twenty twenty-four and June twenty twenty-four and provide guidance and compliance with the tax budget for twenty twenty-five.
And I would ask for a second.
Discussion if I may?
Okay.
We have the budget coming up.
Yes.
Can we have him look that over?
That's what this is for.
I apologize.
Since he has been doing the budget.
Yes.
For all the years ahead.
Not that we don't trust anyone.
And that he's overseeing all the audits.
It's good that he double checked it.
For the next twenty years, I'd love to have another set of eyes.
Right.
Check it, that is a C P A, if that's okay with you.
I completely understand.
Okay. With that.
Well, I have a question. So Jeff is going to work with you on doing it, or Jeff's gonna do it?
No, we're doing it together.
Okay. So Jeff and you are gonna work on it together?
Yes.
And then the second part was, read the bank. He's reconc- can you say that part again?
Yeah.
Or explain it to me, you don't have to read.
He's just doing the reconcile for the bank with the U A N for May and June.
And then you're gonna take it over?
Yeah.
Okay. I'm good to go. I would ask for a second on the motion to accept the resolution as written.
I will second.
Ma'am, will you please help to vote?
Jim?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
There's two places to sign.
All right, moving on as we sign this. Mister Mazur, I'm gonna turn the meeting over to you, or?
Who wants to go first?
I'd say this to Bob first because it's probably gonna be quicker.
All right. Chief Wardle, if you want to address the, your fire levy and any options or ideas that you may have.
For sure. I think I laid it out in that letter I sent you last week as many minutes I could. So just, basically, I mean, my idea is to urge you to, to put on a fourteen point six mil township wide levy that would generate the bare minimum that the fire department needs to operate into the future on a permanent basis at the lowest cost of the taxpayers. So they're getting the most for their money, and we can keep the level of service where it is today.
And this is by a township wide?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
That's my recommendation. I don't, I don't really see a feasible way to maintain our level of service any otherwise.
May I answer a question?
One second. And well, you, it might cover. Can, can you please explain? Yeah, we all have been briefed on it and looked through it, and I know you did a presentation a few weeks ago, but there may be people here today that doesn't understand the difference between a township wide levy and a permanent levy or a temporary levy. And also how it, I know you might not have the numbers right in front of you, how the difference is gonna fall out, but if you could.
So a township wide levy was an option that was given by a judge to a township back in two thousand and three or two, and then the law came through in two thousand and three. So it allows entities like ourselves to collect fire levy monies from properties that have annexed away from the township all the way back from two thousand and three until forever. Therefore, since they're receiving our services, because typically if it's the township, it's gonna be our first in district, so when it goes to the city with our automaticated agreement, we're still going there. We're still the fire department that serves that property. So it tries to make it somewhat fair. So if you choose to leave the township, or the city chooses for you to leave the township, the entity that's basically providing that fire N E M S care is still being paid for. Or we're still generating tax.
Revenue.
Tax revenue from that property. So, that being said, it's uniquely opportunistic for a township like us that gets eaten away by the city more and more and more, and especially high revenue tax properties like the casino and places like Cooper Stadium that if it ever gets developed, will probably generate a fair amount of tax revenue. But we're the ones taking all the runs there. So feasibly, if we were to try to maintain our level of service with just a permanent levy like the police ran, I would need it to generate four point five million dollars more than what the permanent levies now generate. And that would be ten point three mils added to the eleven that they're already paying in permanent levies. So it becomes an extraordinary expense and increase in their tax, their fire tax levies. And one mil for, that only generates two hundred eighty-four thousand dollars. So we're looking at a four to five hundred dollar cost for one hundred thousand. Your own valuation.
Mm-hmm.
Increase. Not, that's on top of what they're already paying. So the township wide levy, we would erase the levies that are on there now, the permanent ones. Everything would be replaced. It would be a levy of fourteen point six mil, with each mil generates three hundred and seventy-five thousand because it's bringing in revenue from those properties that have been annexed out. So one mil's worth thirty-three percent more almost. So you can basically operate and pass a levy for less mileage because it's gonna generate more revenue.
So what would be the difference on a hundred thousand dollar home, what we're paying now versus what we would pay then? Would there be a savings by there being more fish in the pond? Because it's, it's a yes and no vote for the people. But by having a township wide levy, you have places like the casino, you have places like Cooper Stadium, all these different places now that would be required to help pay, would that not give a relief to the people that are currently paying?
Yes, yes. So basically, it's a difference of to generate the same amount of money. We're looking to increase your, your tax dollars approximately two hundred dollars per hundred thousand, whereas your standard levy was at five hundred.
Okay.
So it's a pretty substantial savings to keep what we have now.
John, you have anything else you want to ask?
No, sir. Can you read that?
Right. Yeah, I wanna ask something. I probably should know this, but I always hear the casino, and I always hear Cooper Stadium, and other properties. Can, can somebody give me an example of what the others would be?
Sure. Give you an example, there was a place on the corner of Trigear and Wilson that used to be called the McFarland, Dr. McFarland owned. That was annexed into the city of Columbus. I wanted to purchase that property, but once they annexed it, I can't be a trustee if it's in the city of Columbus, and it can't come back. They put the apartments in there. So that would be something that we would get a tax base on that. If you go towards Hilliard on Trigear, so that would be taking you to the west, as you go over the train bridge, all of that area over there was Franklin Township, except for one property. Are they still township, or did it all?
We only, we still only have one now. They annexed everything else and we said that.
So one parcel stayed, but the rest annexed into the city, and they go up all those apartments.
Okay.
So all these different entities where they have annexed over into the city of Columbus since two thousand and three, all of these, these are just an example. They will be forced, if the residents say yes, they think they should pay their fair share, then they, those parcels can pay. And I believe there's other parcels that can't.
There are quite a few on Hartman Road that used to be ours that are now being annexed away.
Not about the ones that are going in and out of Trigear.
Absolutely.
Yeah, so everything, okay, I get it now, then. I just always hear the two, and I just have to ask the question.
Those are just the big ones.
Even in twenty twenty-six, if they do it, in twenty twenty-six or twenty thirty. So what it will do, Mister Brothers, is it behooves of someone to say, I'm annexing into the city because now you're gonna pay both taxes.
Right.
So it helps protect our borders.
I get it. I understand now. I just needed to know more. Because I had people ask me that question.
For sure. The other upside of this is it does discourage new buildings or current companies to stay within the township, so they're not looking to go to the city. So unless, unless a law gets developed, if this is in place, they'll say, well, I don't want to go to the city.
I got it.
So just so that you know, right there on Wilson Road, by me down from the bus station, as you are going to the south where the power, where the car wash is, that empty lot and the next three houses were just bought up, and those are being annexed into the city. And they're putting in a crane rental business there that's currently on the corner of Georgesville. No, second, no, no.
It's on Phillipi right by the road.
Yeah.
It's an equipment road.
Yes.
Yeah. Are we, are we good here?
Yeah.
I will, this is something I don't, we don't normally do in special meetings, but this is tax wise, and it does affect you, and there's some new information. I would ask, if someone had a question, briefly, I'll open the floor for questions. If you have a question, raise your hand. Yeah.
So will that be retroactive? Where they, so the township won't?
Not, you wouldn't go back and collect it, would you?
So in other words, let's say they annex all of the north end of the township between now and the end of the year. That would not?
Yeah, that would go in.
That, it would go in. Even in twenty twenty-six, twenty thirty, whenever anything would be annexed, they would have to pay. The retro goes back to twenty twenty, excuse me, two thousand and three. If someone annexed in two thousand and one, there's nothing we can do.
But you guys would be able to go back on like the property that was just annexed into the city there at Trigear and hey?
Anything from two thousand and three on?
Forever.
Any other questions?
Bob, you're looking to generate how much?
Five.
Five half mils? Plus our.
Are they still G M A, the casino?
The casino, yes, they would, they would be in that timeframe as well. The last time we looked at this, Bob, I believe that was one point two mil is what, million is what they would, is what their portion was gonna be.
It would be our biggest opponent. Yeah, you can't, yeah. What are you doing? Yes.
So, this might be a stupid question, but why can't the trustees be proactive and be like, no, you're not taking our property. This is township.
Go right ahead.
So I go to the county commissioners' meetings, usually on a regular basis. It's the county commissioners that actually have the say in it. We cannot say, we have no voice in it. They just notify us to let us know that they've taken it. We can't say no whatsoever. This is why a federal judge passed this township wide levy, because municipalities are being ate up and gobbled up. So, and what ends up happening, it gets too expensive delivering the township because every time we lose a parcel, we have to have a levy because we're not generating that money.
Well, it's only that the ones, the levies that are on there, the price gets up because.
Right, we've, they got less people to pay.
Less people to pay. Yeah, there's not, our hands are tied with annexation, and that's a sad thing, and that's, that's one of the things that I am fighting at the state level. It was taken Ohio revised code to change that, where we have a say in, you know, we have a hearing of why you want to annex in. One of the problems is, one of the great problems that we face, and I won't hide from it, city of Columbus holds people hostage with sewer and water. In my, in my personal opinion, and this is not the opinion of this board, and I'm not speaking for the board, speaking for Jim Leeser, and that is, that's extortion by the city of Columbus. And, you know, I don't have a problem with saying that in a public meeting. When it's, when right is right and wrong is wrong. It's extortion. When you have something and you're not, you, you hold it out and you want the tax. All they want, they don't, they don't care about the properties. City of Columbus just wants the tax revenue. And we still have to serve it. And I'll get off my high horse because I'm getting fired up on it because they aggravate me to death on this. But I, let you know, I am, that's one of the things that I, I, we each have a unique situation here, and we all have our little, we all have our little niches, and I'm working daily with trying to get ahold of state, talking with state senators and state reps to get this changed. This and several other things that needs to be changed. Mister Mazur and I have had several meetings with them now, and.
One of the biggest, sir, is that, giving you an example, Big Run East.
Yeah.
There was a, they, towards the end, when the city was annexing one side of the street, they accidentally, they say accidentally, annexed some of the other people's property that was in the township. Well, they want to annex back in. You cannot annex back into the township. So if you lived, if you were in the township before, or let's just say that corner, you know what, we're tired with the city, we want to annex in. You can't annex back. I don't know why it's a one-way valve.
I, that, that's a good.
It makes no sense.
And that's one of the, that's one of the questions that I am raising at a higher level.
So for that reason, we're allowed to do this township wide levy, but be assured that you're gonna see, as we've seen before, false information, in my opinion, go out that's saying it's gonna cost this much and this, and you'll get eight by ten things from different interest groups saying, don't, don't do it, your taxes will go up. It's because other entities that are paying for that do not want you to say yes because they're gonna have to pay. But by us being able to educate the public, hopefully they'll understand a yes and no vote means.
And, and, and one of, one of the, one of the actions of this board is to make sure that you folks that show up to meetings, we're gonna be holding other meetings throughout the township to explain it, but that you're, you're fully aware, you have the, you have all the knowledge that you need. That's why I thought it was important to let you guys ask questions on this matter. So you're informed. You can talk, talk to your neighbors when you get, when you start getting, I call it trash mailers, because that's.
Bring them in.
Bring them in, so we can, bring them in, come, call us up, we'll, we'll talk to them. Or, or at least you have the information as residents that show up to the special meetings and to the meetings that we'll have, and to try to get as much information out as possible. I, I know, I think the last time we had one at the firehouse out on Sullivan. We're planning on doing that again. Working on having something up in the northern part, probably. Gonna try to work with Saint Marguerite Church and have it in their back buildings there. But it, it's education, because that's, there's gonna be a lot of, there's a false narrative out there because they're losing millions, they're gonna lose millions of dollars. Yes, one more, one more question, we're gonna close the floor unless someone has an ask, but go ahead.
So are, are they, these meetings that you're talking about, are they gonna be in the evening so more residents can attend?
They'll be different, at different times throughout the day.
Yeah.
Okay.
Because we want to try to get as many working people that can come with questions as well.
That, that's why I asked.
Yeah, yes, Cindy.
Is there any documentation or anything that, you know, I could have in hand so that if somebody asks, I can answer intelligently and help them comprehend? Listen, this is what's transpired, you know, we still have to go to these places, and we're in a, Columbus is trying to usurp our tax money so that our guys can't get paid because people don't comprehend the duality of what the city is doing here.
Well, not at this moment, but as soon as we put in the work to get this up the ballot so that we have confirmed this is what we're doing.
Good.
I think we're in a very unique situation this time around because the board, the fiscal office, and myself, and Steve are all very transparent and honest people. And we will be a hundred percent transparent and a hundred percent honest of this is what we're running, this is what it's gonna generate, and this is why we need it.
Good.
And there shouldn't be, there shouldn't be any unanswered questions out there that the opponents can call out.
Cool.
Yeah, I just wanna back you up. Yeah. So you just want some information. Fires, information that we can get together. As I mentioned, if it's possible that we're able to get some type of professional help that does these type of things.
I think it's important, if you haven't seen Bob's presentation, that we get people to see that because it's really not overly educated on it. But as I sat through that presentation, it was easy for me to follow. I understood it, made sense. So I would highly recommend anybody that you talk to that has questions about it, have them come to one of the presentations that Bob put together. It, it flows great, and it's easy to understand. And that'll, that'll be one of the things that we have in special meetings also. Bob, Bob's finding this out right now on the spot, but he'll be presenting them at special meetings.
So to me, as a resident, for me, John Fleishman, it's made sense to me because at this point, just like we're seeing up north, you want annex? Okay. It's not gonna be skin off my back because you're gonna pay too.
Yeah.
You don't get away from the taxes just because you're going to the city.
Sure. Can I get some clarification?
Please.
One, there will be a reduction in taxes if it's a township wide levy? There will not be a reduction in?
What they're currently paying.
What they're currently paying, no.
There'll be a smaller increase.
There will be an increase.
It's just a smaller increase than the old.
Okay.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure.
That's important information to get out there.
I just wanted to make sure.
There would be a small increase.
There'll be a small increase, but it'll be less than what if we went with a permanent levy.
Yes.
That's, yeah, we definitely need.
By a third. About a third, wouldn't it?
Uh, not, not quite, it's half and a half.
Yeah.
Or more than half.
A little more than half.
And then my next question would be, once you decide how you want to pursue this levy, we'll need a resolution so I can send to Carrie Richards at the county auditor. So they have an understanding of what we're gonna request on the ballot in November. And then we'll have the exact figures from her.
Yes.
And that has to be on, or sent to the board of elections late July or August?
August sixth is the deadline.
Sooner we get it in.
We need to get it, we need to get it in there at the end of, I'm sorry, is it August sixth? Yeah, August sixth. We need to get it in there at the end of July.
Sooner the better, the sooner the better, because we can start putting out actual information.
Yeah. What happens if it gets voted down?
Uh, we're gonna have to get creative and most likely roll back to one station.
The budgets are, the budget is tight.
So.
These guys, the fire department, not just fire department, all, all the departments here are budget, their budgets are tight, but it's, and, and tax revenue runs the fire department, the police department. Roads, they give, they, their budget's tight, but they get money from the state and things like that, but it's, it's, we don't ask, they don't ask for extraordinary.
My budget's tight too.
All of our, all of our budgets are tight.
Yeah.
One of the things about it, if it fails, as you said, fail, most people don't realize that. These were, years ago, someone put them on as timed levies instead of being a permanent levy. So let's just say you had a permanent levy, and you were asking for a little bit more, and it fails, at least you still have some operating cost. If this fails, it takes away that operating cost, so.
My problem was the last one.
Go ahead.
Um, I, I just want clarification. So let's say the, the city comes down through there, and they annex the whole northern end, okay? Now, all of that is, all of that northern end gonna be double taxed?
If they annex in after.
Even though the homeowners do not want it?
Yep.
So see, that's downside to it too, because the city is relentless on grabbing up all the property they can.
That's why it's important it just passes to protect the township.
I'll have to look into if residences are even affected. I don't, I honestly don't know if residential properties that they annex, do they have to pay? They do?
Yeah.
Okay, I'm sorry.
At least it was the last time we did it.
If it's called down under type two reorganization.
Yes, okay, yes.
So are we gonna put out fires? Are we gonna send out fires? Then one of the main things that should be on that fire is, do you want to have both fire stations?
We can't.
Make that imperative.
We, we can't, as a township, we cannot send out fires. We can't spend taxpayer monies on, on levy advertisements.
The union and, and et cetera can. Now, there's no reason that a group of us can't get together.
And form a pack.
And form a pack and do it. And I'd be happy to work with anyone on a pack, and we can use our own dollars.
Poshing yourself on that, on saying that on that.
But it's township. That's why I don't understand, it's township. Why can't we pass out fires?
You can.
To keep it.
You can. We cannot make the fires or use any taxpayer dollars to design the fires or make the fires.
The, the O R C basically stops townships from fighting amongst themselves where they're gonna pay for advertisements for people to vote yes, and then also for people to vote no, and then waste a bunch of money.
The O R C, the O R C is very critical of what we can and what we cannot spend money on. All right, I will close the floor at this time for questions. Bob, Bob, Steve, whichever one, what do you need from this board today?
Um, well, we, I guess we would need, if you prepare, a resolution deciding what levy, the amount of the levy, and then, like I said, I can move forward and get that to the county auditor.
Which is gonna take some time.
Yeah, it could, it could. And then, once that's, comes back from the auditor, then I'm not sure if we need, I guess we need a resolution to approve that levy amount, which will then go to the board of elections.
So we need a declaration of necessity. Basically, it's the resolution that says this is necessary, this is what we want. That gets sent to the auditor for certification, and then once you get, actually, that might not be the resolution. The third step is a resolution to proceed by putting the levy on the ballot. So you may today just make a motion of necessity and to send our request to the auditor.
So here's the thing that, it, it would be up to the rest of the board. So here's the thing that, it, it would be up to rest board if we were to do, I would say we would do a resolution. Acknowledging that we are pursuing this at, at this rate.
We'll make a motion to that.
At the fourteen point six. Talking about dollars. And then, we would then later, once we get back from Carrie's, then we would adopt it. Under a resolution that it's going on to ballot. So there would be two different ones, so if the boards, the pleasure of the board wanted to move today. They would do a resolution in order to, um, accept the numbers that are going to Carrie Ritchie's office. It could be a motion, but it's better to do a resolution, it's, you know, you know, so that way. It's overkill, if it's overkill, that's better than being under, cause we don't have time to make a mistake. And then once that, um, goes in, these gentlemen can do their work and then it would come back for us to vote. Does it go on the ballot, and that would be the big one, and that would be in a public meeting.
I see what you're saying, yeah. So there's dollars, yeah, you can give it away.
Right, but why take a chance? I mean, you, you can use a resolution when you really didn't need to, I mean, you can use an elephant gun to go squirrel hunting, but you really don't need it.
Mike, do you have anything you wanna add in or? I've talked to many people and it's easy for me to say that I'm, I know how I'm gonna vote because. I, I, I think it's imperative that we try to keep both firehouses open.
I concur.
And so, that's the way I'm leaning, if that's what you were looking for, maybe more. But, um, I've, I've thought about this a lot, I've talked to Bob a lot. We were together at a meeting with some people on Tuesday night and we talked about, um, it took up most of the meeting and, uh. I put a lot of thought into it and so, um. I'm leaning that way, I think it's important to keep both firehouses, so that's really all I can say on it, so. And there's a declaration of.
A resolution.
Declaration of necessity, is how it's worded.
And, um, if I may sir, um, ma'am, would we have a resolution number? Normally we don't do that, but in the circumstances here at the table, would you be able to afford us a resolution number?
Yes, now give me a second, I can double check on that.
Okay.
Thank you.
I apologize.
No, I was gonna ask her, you, you got ahead of me.
Considering this.
Cause Terry will, Terry will question, okay, um.
Resolution number.
The only reason.
I, I got it.
This before, this is how we had to do it.
Resolution number is gonna be twenty twenty four dash zero eight seven.
Declaration of necessity.
For the purpose of, um, state.
Hit it maestro.
Okay.
You've already got it down already, I, I was, I was writing my two, I was writing my key points down.
Be resolved by the board of trustees this day of, um. Uh, July, excuse me, June twentieth, in our special meeting. Resolution number twenty.
Twenty four.
Twenty twenty four dash zero eight seven. Be resolved by the board of trustees, Franklin Township, Franklin County in Ohio. That the board makes a resolution to go into a.
Township wide.
Township wide levy for the purpose of. Looking for that word.
Declaration of necessity.
A declaration of necessity. If there's no more further questions on the matter, I would ask for a second.
You should probably put the.
Oh, go ahead. This would be in a millage of.
Fourteen point six.
Fourteen point six mills.
Hopefully to generate approximately five and a half million dollars in revenue per year.
To generate approximately upwards of five point.
Five.
Five mills.
Million.
Million, million, excuse me.
I gotta be careful, millions and mills, two different things.
If there's no further question on the matter at hand, I would ask for a second.
I will second that, out of the necessity of needing it, miss it.
Okay, uh, then we got Jim?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
So now that's the first steps, and then that way you guys can take that and run with it. And then the big vote will be, um, which, this doesn't mean that it's guaranteed until we have it from a public meeting. And then we actually vote one more time if it goes on the ballot.
And this is why I look at my notepad some days ago. What is this note for?
Scratch it off.
Alright, moving on. Is it, you have to, you look like you have something for us or?
Were you okay with that resolution?
No, no, that's fine, that's fine, you covered all, you highlighted all the names.
I guess, I guess it's Mr. Stevens' turn?
Yes, sir, James, you can mind talking about your, your, uh. Your bill.
You're all done, Bob.
Thank you very much. Yeah, you good?
I'll drag your chair up.
Yeah.
Take your pen.
Um, I appreciate y'all meeting with us today, we're, as you all know, this has been a project that we've been in the works of for quite some time. And we're getting down to the absolute nitty gritty to where we need to figure out exactly from the board. What we can build and where we can build it. We've put numbers together multiple times and some things have changed throughout the course. Been working, fine-lined, been working and as have the other guys helping us get this all put together. We put together a whole notebook for Steve and that's new for me there, Steve. Kind of copies a lot of the stuff that's in your book now.
Mm-hmm.
Um, we've already went out, we, we have received two quotes, but you gentlemen have all seen the two quotes. The other option we had was letting us do a lot of the work in order to save tag taxpayer dollars. And we did a lot of work getting those numbers. And we put together kind of a proposal and give it to Steve, Steve has talked with our legal about this, there's some, some angles that we need to. Go, some things that we need to take care of. But where we're at, we just need two questions answered. What are we building? And where are we building?
We're building a building.
We're building a building, I totally understand that.
I, I believe we have to send, sum this out for our, what is it called, RFP?
Well, here, 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 I can't do anything until we decide, um, what do you want? Let me put it this way, gentlemen, you have approximately between a two hundred thousand dollar, uh, fund set up. Today, and if you wanna utilize a RFP, you have approximately another four hundred thousand dollars. So in total, the township has six hundred thousand dollars to build a, a maintenance garage. And I'm gonna kinda take the bull by the horns here. One, location, have you had the three of you decided on a, on an absolute location you'd like to have this building? Cause I cannot proceed with an RFP.
I, I have an, I have my opinion on where to build the building.
Okay. And question number two, uh, once you decide the location. Uh, what would you like the building to entail? Meaning garages, office, restroom, break room, uh, shower facilities. Size. And, uh, that will be the, the foundation of moving this project along.
Well, I, I know, I know there's been a lot of talk of, and I, I'll, I'll speak first since I said I have an opinion. There's been a lot of talk of moving it out onto Sullivan Avenue. And after doing some more research and looking at maps and where most of the work is being done at. It's my opinion that we keep the building here on site, cause the majority of the work is either here. Or, the majority of the work is here, in this area. And we've already got part of the stuff here, the salt's here, financially, it would just be easier, the utilities is already here. That is my opinion.
May I, am I permitted to say something based on that? Where would you build it? And, and that's gonna be my question, where, where would you build it on this?
Or the existing building is. We would be tearing that down and moving it back. You guys have anything?
Well, no, you wanna go ahead first, Mike?
No, I, I guess I came in late, um, to office, I, I knew that they paid for. Um, both places to be surveyed and things like that, and, uh. Did you ever, did anyone ever send me anything on what it would look like back here?
Well, I, I purposely, I've never, I've never put a, the biggest constraint with here is. The space to build something that would necessitize what we need.
Right.
Right now, we have a building sitting in here behind us, um, you definitely couldn't build a building the same size as that.
Right.
You just couldn't, because the bay doors on this building are ten foot wide. Our trucks has returned to backing into these buildings. You have this much room on your mirrors and the door openings, so you're gonna have to build twelve foot wide doors. The depth behind that building, there really isn't much before you hit the other property line. You couldn't really go that much farther this way because you've got high pressure gas lines coming out of the gas house. Trust me, we have sat down, we've walked it, we've wheeled it off, we've tried to figure out a way to do it. When the idea of possibly putting it in Sullivan Avenue to us made more sense because of the space we would be able to do. Because to be quite honest with you, right now, and what we're so fortunate, trust me, our department is so fortunate. They have the equipment that we've got to be able to do the job that we've got, we just don't have the room. We have four dump trucks sitting outside right now, we have a backhoe that has to sit outside right now. We have a tractor with a, a boom mower on it that has to sit outside right now. Because all the other bays are full of the foot. So, what we were looking to build was something that was gonna be at least sixty foot deep. So we can actually get like, say, the backhoe in and just park it up against the back wall and still have plenty of room. To back your truck with a trailer in and still have enough room with, with the five bays. To be able to get everything underneath the one roof, plus with what we proposed here, it has a twenty foot lean-to off the backside. That goes the whole distance of the building, so now you literally have everything that would be under roof. That we don't have under roof right now, and still make, that would allow us to have room. Say, in, you know, still in the building too, but everything would be undercover. I'm just not so sure, because the way that this property line runs, it runs at an angle. Behind this building, our existing building, and we've only got what, twenty feet?
Did we get anything, did we, Mr. Mazur, did we get anything from the surveyors?
Sure.
The pot, pot map?
Yeah, property.
I think that was, that was sent out.
Yeah, property's all survey.
Okay.
So how much, where the lean-to is on this building now?
We don't have a lean-to on this building.
Where the open, where.
It's soft lines.
Where the open storage is, how many more feet do we have to, to back the property line?
Maybe twenty five, five.
Twenty five, thirty feet?
Okay.
So we can do.
There'd be sixty.
Fifteen to twenty, there's shit kept.
But the, the other problem is when you're trying to back in the shop, it's not hard due to these doors, we're so close.
And, and that's something that, and I'm not saying anything about anybody who parks back here. We ran into a situation even last week when we have people to park on the backside of this building, you cannot back a trailer into that building.
Well, let me, th- there's things that we can do about that. There's things that we can do about that. Um, I'm, I'm just looking at the cost of, i- it just, me, it, the more I looked at it. Having the road department separated from the biggest portion of the township does not make sense.
Kind of puts us in the middle. It literally puts us in the middle because broad street is our dividing.
Geographically, it would be middle. But not in the relationship of our residents.
So I got a question. What would happen hypothetically if we built, we cut this off? We put a building for the office up here and give them more room and be able to put their building. I agree with you that everything is here already.
Yeah.
But even if we had just the office space, I mean, we could build, they build churches now out of pole barns. And et cetera, and there's all kind of room.
Yeah.
We have some money to work with, the, we already own the land. If we made a place that was bigger than this room that we would be able to operate out of for the office space. Half of this building can be torn off and the fire department still has theirs and this would be all open footprint space.
Well, here's the thing with that, John, is we've only got.
Yeah, but I mean, who knows what the difference in the cost would be because. You know, I, I mean, would it be that much more? I mean, if we ran the numbers.
Building a whole new office out there, oh, we can run the numbers, but I think it would be.
But it would, it would serve two purposes, one purpose, depending upon how much money it would cost us for what they're trying to do to get under roof. This space would be open, then we put something that, um, that we can a- actually later on, maybe if we wanna add to. Like most churches do, you would have your offices. Edna, Edna did that, they have a building that they built on and, and it was like a pole building, it's a nice. Facility where they have meetings and then they have their office. Um, that would have to be a little bit less than what. I, I just think we, if we ran the numbers, that would be quite interesting to see.
We'll look at those numbers, I'm, I'm sure we could, but.
I'm, I'm confused, okay, so what if we was to take?
John just threw, John just threw a curve ball, I guess.
If we was to take half this building and just take this off and leave in the fire station. That opens up this whole front area here, still put the building back here in the back. And you have all of this here that's open, or reconstrue the footprint. We would move the offices up there to, um, Frank Road, not Frank Road, to Sullivan.
I, I will caution you on that, John, and I, I understand what you're saying, but I, I, I have seen the prices of still buildings.
And, and I mean, you don't know until you ask and see how much money that we have to work with.
I, I've seen, I've seen the, the cost of still buildings and they're going up daily. And I think that's one of the reasons why Mr. Mazur's needing a definite answer today on whoever gonna put it, that way he can get moving with his.
I don't know, I didn't mean to make it more difficult, but it was just. This building is how old, a hundred years old on us?
What, would you even know when this was built?
In nineteen fifty.
Going on seventy five years old next year, and that building.
It's not a hundred.
I get it, that's why it needs to come down.
Yeah, um, I, I just think that we could, we can, for the, for the bang for our buck, it's better to put the building here. And then even if we do need more storage, we can get, we can get a lean-to or we can get another. Black canopy section, just for the equipment up under. Okay, and, and I'm not gonna sit here and. My question would be is where would you put that?
Put what, the lean-to?
The lean-to for the equipment, because.
You've got the back of the building, you've got the back of the building right here.
Yeah, behind that building.
Yeah, you've got, how long is that building?
Forty feet.
Sixty feet?
Sixty long.
Yeah.
So you go sixty, go, go sixty by twelve.
Where are you gonna put your police cruisers?
That's our problem.
Right, we'll work that out because along the fence row going out, they have that room over there too.
And you also realize we can't go any further this way with that building, because they're parking out here.
Yeah, absolutely.
Yeah.
I agree, I see that.
Now that where you're sitting here and you have a, uh, four bay shop with ten foot doors. That can no longer be ten foot doors, now you're gonna be taking and making them twelve foot doors. So you're gonna be limiting down to just a couple bays now instead of what we have now. You know, I, I, we're, we're gonna, we will accept anything that you all decide to do. I've just spent, I, I shouldn't just say me, we have spent so much time. I met with the, the board up there, Sullivan Avenue, proposed this then, and on, even on that day. It was, this sounds like what we need to do, that's what we brand with. So everything that we've worked on now. Was, was, in, in all honesty.
And at the last, and at the last meeting, it was.
I'll, I'll stop.
Gentlemen, we're gonna, we're, we're spinning wheels here, we're gonna cut back to the chase. Jim got three quotes for the Sullivan Avenue problem, eight hundred thousand dollars, one point two million, and three hundred thirty thousand. Okay, now, the eight million, one point two, finish. Okay, now, the eight million, one point two, finished product, turnkey, walk in the door, we're open for business.
That's what we have to do.
Three hundred and thirty thousand, Jim has a shell. And I'm gonna let you finish, I'm gonna let you finish where we are at three hundred and thirty thousand dollars.
With three hundred and thirty thousand dollars, we have the shell up, we have the gravel in place. Um, and that shell, when I say the shell, that's a completed shell, that's with concrete, that's with concrete floor. Building's completely insulated all the way around, ceiling, walls, the inside of the building is completely covered with white metal. And then the drainage, we don't have, the drainage will be in already, three or four drains. And then, and then we go from there.
Who's doing the work? Who's doing the drainage and the gravel and all that?
Well, a lot of the stuff that we would be able to do, which is what we're trying to keep some of the costs down in order to build what we're building, we're extremely capable of doing some of this work. And it doesn't take everybody to do it, and it doesn't take a whole lot of time to do it, because these are things that we've done in the past.
I, I tell you, the, the amount of calls, and, and I, I don't know about the other two trustees, but the amount of work that I see that the road department has, taking care of everything already, adding on completing a building.
We're not, we're not building the building.
No, completing, doing that work that you're talking about is, is not, not a viable option, in my opinion.
And once again, I'll just leave it at this, we're just trying to save taxpayers' money, is what we're trying to do. That way we can get the best bang for our buck.
But are you, if you're taken, taken away from doing the services?
It only takes a couple of us.
Isn't there something, Steve, that, that we weren't, Julie was saying that we shouldn't be involved in going the work? Or was it the auditors that said?
No, what you're gonna, yeah, well, the auditor, of course, says that he doesn't want our road department doing.
And using road funds.
Right, right.
And that will have to come out of the general collection.
Yeah, but the hours or something, I forget what it was, I, I just remember something.
And, and there, here we, this is what I'm saying, we're getting to the point where we have to make a decision.
Well, here's, and I know it's frustrating because everybody put their heart and soul into this. At the end of the day, we need to build something, whether it be up there or here. Mr. Mazur, I, I tend to agree with you, we got so many buildings out here in Saltline, et cetera. It would be nice to put something back here and tear that building down. Yeah, maybe the main building would be smaller, but you would be able to have a twelve by, or, excuse me, twelve by, uh, sixty lean-to, which would get a lot of equipment under.
And you could actually probably put.
Sides on it or?
The one side is, the back side of the salt barn is already covered, right? The one we have now, if we did something like that.
The one we're hearing this building?
Yeah.
It's falling apart. When we were back there even cleaning things up, we've got boards, the whole thing is just.
No, 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 not that one.
The one on the back?
Yeah.
The backside of it is covered, but you can't add anything to it.
Right, no, no, I know that.
You can't store things in it.
But, yeah, I mean, we could do something like that on the backside of there.
And there would still be plenty of room along the fence row, I mean, there's plenty of room to park cruisers. I don't think that that's, you know, we're talking thirteen cruisers, so I don't, I know that they.
That could really be, that could really be dropped down.
Yeah, I, I agree, um, but to me, you have everything right here in this complex, but and the, and the thing that we, obviously that shop needs to go, that needs to go.
Ten years ago, that needs to go ten years ago, but.
And underneath a twelve by sixty, uh, lean-to, that's a good size. Or even if you enclosed, even if you did two small buildings, if you enclosed that behind it and then built that one, I mean, that would be huge.
Yeah. Mike, you've been quiet. I don't have any information on this, uh, footprint back here. This is my second meeting since I've been a trustee that I sit on. And it, at each meeting, it just continuously changes. And so I don't have, if you sent it to me, I don't have it, I never looked at it. So I don't have an opinion on whether or not we can put it back here. I just don't know because it seems like to me if I, if I'm thinking how far of the salt barn, but the way you're describing it, we don't know all that straight back.
Uh, we've got, even the area of the lot that is in behind the cell tower, it's not ours. We, we don't, we've got a very narrow spot that goes back toward the salt barn.
And I was gathering that from what was being said.
Everything from the salt barn to the edge of this wooden line back here, that's not ours. The gentleman just allowed us, you know, when we had all the wood after the storms, he allowed us to pop it away there. That's, that's not ours. We're restricted by the high pressure gas lines that run in between those two buildings that come from the gas house and what we can build over them.
We were close to the point of purchasing the property, but then that all fell through.
Yeah, I was here for all of that, and I was here for a lot, a lot of the conversation. And I'm pretty sure I was back there when we decided to survey both properties. Or, and I wasn't involved, you understand what I'm trying to say?
I just, in other words, I don't remember saying, in other words, now this would have been back when Mr. Horn was in?
Yes.
And we did present the board with the, everything printout of the layout that you had.
Do you understand, you see where I'm coming from? I cannot sit here today and make a decision on something. I, I, I'm just, and I understand that, and I, I'm gonna be honest, I, I understand your frustration. And I've even spoken to you about it. You put in this, it's, this is that I can keep track of, three changes now, three. And I'm sure you're gonna tell me, if you was honest, and to sit here and say, you're gonna say it's more than three changes. And that's what this is all about and everything. Only thing I'll, I'll say on the part that's been discussed today is, is I do have concerns with the small department that you have being able to get, to do work wherever the building goes and to still make sure that all the residents are taken care of. I, I worry about that a lot. You guys do so much. Um, I for one have had to call and bother you guys recently multiple times when people ask for stuff, and you always do a good job, get out there. In your department, I don't know that everybody even knows how many you truly have in your department for what you get done. And then we have, and, but if we have another winter that's not huge, yeah, there'd be time because this is gonna now drag into the winter. But what if we have a winter where you guys are constantly out, you know what I'm trying to say?
I, I absolutely one hundred percent agree. Would we love to just be able to have somebody come in and say, you know, because it, it kinda takes me back to the business that I own before I started here at Township sixty years ago, to have somebody give us a turnkey building, we hand them prints, and they build it, and when it's done, they hand us the keys. One hundred percent agree, that would be awesome. Once we had presented to the board the two quotes we had and the price that they were and some of the reaction that we got on those quotes, which is understandable, they're extremely high, that's when we got to thinking, okay, we're gonna find a way to try to save the money to be able to get the best bang for our buck. And that was gonna be with us doing some of the work ourselves, which we're extremely capable of doing because we come from a construction background. That's when we started doing what we did. Okay, and that's why I took it into Mr. Mazur, and I said, you know, here, here is this last quote. And Mr. Fleschman said, hey, we're waiting on you to give us numbers. What, sometimes it's kinda hard to give you numbers on, you really don't know what it is you're supposed to be building. And that's why we put together that last proposal here, which is just a guess, it's a guess.
Right.
And, you know, to me, even if the building was to cost around five hundred thousand to have it done with us doing a lot of the work, it's a heck of a lot better than eight hundred or one point two million.
Right.
And that was where my, my mindset was at. And I apologize because the whole time that I'm sitting there doing this, based off the conversation that I had with the board of trustees up at Sullivan Avenue, when Ryan and I met with everybody up there, we had it all staked out, we had it all painted out. The conversation that I had with the board then was, this sounds, this seems like the place to do it. And, and that's why we ran with it, and I apologize for staying focused on that when maybe what I should have done is I, I should have just said, hey, we need to hold this meeting a long time to have an absolute where.
The last time we sat down at this table like this, we told you, this is still in play. Here, that's why we had to have it surveyed. And looking at where we service most of the people at, I think this is the most viable spot for it. That, that property out there, yeah, we own it, we can use it for other stuff, but right now, I don't know, I, I, I'm, I'm in, I'm in keeping it here, keeping it local to, to the biggest, to the biggest share of our township. I guess you need from us, and we're gonna send the RFPs out, what do you need? Be in order to get, keep moving, because this, this, this building is not getting done with getting them into a new building. The building, just so the public knows while we're looking at this, this building behind us here, the back wall, they stored salt up against, it's up against cinder blocks for years, and it's crumbling. The sink, the plumbing of the sink is so, I don't know what you call it, but it goes over and goes and drains into a urinal.
Which we had.
The drains in the wall just don't work. And it rains, when it rains outside, it's raining inside. So, and there has to be, something has to be done, they've got the best work out of it, but it's a disaster. And, you know, I, I'm looking at this, I, I mean, what, what's the realistic, you got, you got a wash bay, that's a dream. That's, that's something that, you know, yeah, it'd be nice to have.
It was a suggestion.
Right, you really don't need it. So then that leaves us with four doors.
Almost need that fifth bay, that, that fifth bay is just a suggestion to be used. It would, the drainage would be put into that bay as a wash bay, it's not a separated wash bay. It's just that bay would be where we could wash our vehicles and our equipment with extended drainage in just that one bay.
I think we need to cut to the chase, where's it gonna go? I, I, I'm worried about everything else.
All right, gentlemen, I'm, I'm, here we go again, I'm, I'm like Michael Schellner.
I'm, yeah.
We're, we're, we're just.
Yeah.
I'll do the RFP for this site out here. That way, uh, we're gonna have a figure because we're on a deadline and we have to designate ARPA funds. I will do the RFP for this spot. I will get three quotes, we're out here. We will decide, we'll, we'll have a second survey done. James and I will, Jim and I will sit down with, when we come down to three contractors, we will sit down and then say, look, what can we do on this piece of property? How deep is it, how wide is it? If we have to use three doors, it'll be twelve feet wide, so be, so be it. How much room do we have to go back? Maybe make the garage deeper, maybe put a lean-to on it. That way I'll have solid figures, we'll have solid figures in there. So, when we do file a final report for ARPA, this will buy us time. Okay, I've got a contract, say for half a million dollars.
Right.
This gives me time filing the ARP reports, I can say, whoops, wait a minute, we're changing now. But we have the funds designated.
Right. I, I will make the motion that you send up.
Hold on a minute, please. I don't, I don't really understand the frustration that's, I mean, I guess you put a lot of work into this and why are we going to pay somebody to do another survey back here when I, you just said that.
No, we're, it won't be paid, it'll be part, it'll be part of this RFP process.
We have to do an RFP process.
It won't, it won't cost us anything.
I'm just telling you, don't get frustrated with me because I was never given anything about back here.
No, no, I'm not frustrated, I'm just cutting it to chase.
And so I'm not gonna sit and make a decision on something that I haven't laid my eyes on.
May, may I say something, please? I think what Mr. Mazur's talking about, about survey is, okay, we've already had a survey done for the lot and figure out where our bins are at. Now what we need to do, things have changed one hundred percent. Now what we need to do is have somebody, even like the contractors that we've met up at Sullivan Avenue, now they're gonna have to come here. And that's when they say, okay, we have this much room. So now they kinda kind of survey it around, it, it, survey meaning they gotta take measurements and see if we're able to build with the smaller footprint that we have here compared to what we were planning on. So that's what he was kinda meaning by a survey.
So when you rework this, it sounds like to me, and if I'm wrong, let me know, there's no appetite for the road department to do the work. Yes or no, let's ha, let's just decide. There's no sense in sending them out here and have them.
I, I don't think, I, I don't, I don't think they have the time, in my opinion, they don't have the time.
Anybody agree? Just a second, I see. Anybody agree or not disagree, what do you wanna do?
I'm kind of in the middle, you know, I, I don't.
I understand the savings of money and stuff, but my question to be, which I'm assuming when you made the presentation the very last time, when I heard you, it was you and Ryan, right? And you have a five-man team, is that right or wrong?
And we're, and we're still bringing on two more summer help, so we, we would have five plus Ryan.
This wouldn't even be, this won't even be started in the summer. So anyway, um, so I'm just curious, I don't even know who it is, if there is one. Who, who's your third? Like, when you and Ryan are somewhere doing something, you have, you have someone who runs the crew?
Yes, Bequen.
Bequen.
Okay.
Who's very capable of doing that.
Again, I'm just gonna tell you, my first and foremost, and I believe it is everyone in here, is to take care of the, uh, people in this township. I think people are gonna say they don't particularly care if the equipment, it sits outside because they don't think about it like longevity. I'm not saying I don't care, I do care. We've, like you said, it's been well established several years now, you've been buying the equipment and getting things you need. We heard Tommy when he left.
We're very grateful.
Speak up about the equipment he had to work with when he came in here all those years ago and things like that as a retirement and stuff, and I'm not, I just think it's important that we stop having a meeting and then a couple, two or three months go by, and we think we've done work and there's been a lot of time invested. If we can't even decide exactly where it's gonna go.
I guess, I guess the thing is today, Steve needs in order for us to go, go and get any, anything else done with an RFP is a, is a motion that where we're gonna put, where we're gonna look at getting RFPs for.
It, it gives us a, a starting point. Like I said, I don't wanna jeopardize four hundred and fifty thousand dollars of ARPA funds that we have to give back because we can't, I'm sorry, we can't start a point for a building.
Then I'll make a motion that you do with the RFPs for, um, the property here, replacing the existing building.
But understand, no means does that lock us out of looking at Sullivan. It's just now, when we file that final report for ARPA, it gives the township an option to say, okay, oops, we're moving this building now from Frank Road to Sullivan Avenue.
No, I'll ma, I'll make that motion as, as, as I stated. Okay, so that, that, I hadn't heard that one before, so we're not actually gonna be locking ourselves in here. We're gonna find out whether or not, what can be built here?
Yes.
I feel a little bit better about that.
Because I can't, if I don't have anything tangible to center the money, the treasure.
Absolutely.
Then they're gonna say, send me my, send us our money back.
And we, we just, like I said, and I will say again, don't mean to interrupt you at all, Mr. Beaker. But we're extremely fortunate to have the equipment, everything we've got. But the amount of stuff that we have sitting outside right now that needs to be underneath the roof would be like Bobby parking his fire trucks outside all day and all night long, every day.
I understand.
People would be a little upset about that.
And, and as you're familiar, the firms that we, we contact will be design-built, so they come in here, they have their architect or engineer, and they can look at this and say, have you thought of this, have you thought of that?
And then from this point forward, then we will halt on doing what we're doing.
Yes.
You, this is all great foundational work. And we have an understanding of what you're looking to do, which you and I will sit down with the contractors that we get ahold of and say, this is what we're trying to do here. And that's what I said, and they may say, have you thought of this, have you thought of that? And then in the end, if this site doesn't work, all we have to do is make it, make a change with the ARPA.
So we, we spend a lot of time trying to figure out what it is that we need, a lot of time.
Now, this doesn't slam the door.
Hey, there's a motion on the table.
I have a second.
Okay.
Jim?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Mike?
Yeah. Mr. Mazur, you've got what you need to proceed, correct?
I do, I do.
Let's get this building done. Thank you, gentlemen. Is that all you need from us?
Um, I believe so.
So we're gonna keep this.
Yes.
Because this will come into play.
No, no, I'm just saying, this is the one, if we're going on Sullivan Avenue, we'll need this.
Yes.
Okay. Anything else, Mr. Mazur?
That's it, gentlemen.
Right. Readings adjourned at one eleven.